I will call for the motion if you can answer in the bottom of the matamia or matamia chair. I will recognize you and you will make the motion. I will repeat the motion and ask for a second. The same process relates to the second motion as well. It relates to discussion also. You will be recognized before you speak. If we try to push parameters by this outline, you will be escorted out by law army's clients and will be put and will be put up to their jurisdiction as to what to do with you once you are in their custody. Okay, consent agenda. Uh, Jamie, did you get the minutes? We have the next.
Madam Mayor? Would like to move the matter on.
Move and hide them up?
Yes.
Which is that?
I'd like to move pardon seven. In front of the seven, yes. I second.
I didn't ask for a second. Uh, I recognize you nor deny a second. Uh, I'm in denial.
Denial, you recognize me.
I said not denial.
I do want to appeal to you counsel of that addition, I mean all that denial.
You may hear the main of the power.
I would raise one more. I would like to make a motion to appeal the denial of Madam Mayor.
I deny, I deny again. You have not been recognized, you cannot just be held.
They can appeal, they can represent the case that has favor and it can be dismissed. Underbar.
Okay, then I will, I think. Uh, could you read that to me please?
I'm sorry?
Could you read it to me please?
Sure. Without waiting to be recognized, I appeal the decision of the chair and appeal requirements set. An appeal may generally be debated by the members. Unlike debate on other votes, each member may speak when they want. The chair may speak and debate twice. The first time is preference over the other members and the second time is votes of debate. However, vote has been taken on appeal without debate if it relates in reform and aggression and priority of the business or the uh, is made while the immediately pending question is under due. An appeal is stated and put to the sound of decision of the chair. The required majority vote in the negative to overcome the chair's ruling. A tie sustained the decision of the chair and loses the appeal.
Okay, then um, I'll ask for a second on Jackie's motion.
I second.
Uh, is there a discussion?
Legal counsel, could you please uh, explain what the vote entails as far as for and against, what that means to the counsel?
For and against what?
Uh. Against the appeal of the chair. Okay, so um, if the question, the question is um, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? Majority vote in the negative, so voting no, overcome the chair's ruling. So the chair is capable to overturn your motion. So the no vote means that it overturns the vote.
Okay, is there any discussion? I'll move ahead and ask. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. I take it back. I don't think we understand what you are talking about.
I'm sorry, Jamie.
What I, what I thought you said is there's a, a yes and a no.
Right.
A majority vote in the negative overturns the chair's ruling.
So.
Okay, she can vote. Okay, I will. You vote yes or no? Okay, I'll vote. Counselor, so.
I still have.
It goes on saying.
No, I'll vote. Okay, Jamie, do you want to do or vote?
Counselor, remember I can stick, stick vote for. We'll reword that again, please.
Uh, uh, if you vote?
Yes. A vote? A vote, yes.
I need to.
Is it favor of leaving the either up into consent agenda? A vote in the negative means that you're in favor of leaving it and either the number of.
Seven. Okay, so I need to call for you.
There for Ivy, counsel, there for Ivy?
No.
Counselor, the side one, yes?
No.
Counselor, Una Berna, please put on it?
Yes.
Counselor, woman, are we an agil?
No.
Counselor, woman, jacket, vote. I thought. See, you.
Oh, no, no, I was confused.
You had said that doing a negative is against the chair.
No, we're not, we're not gonna do this to where we change the vote just because they don't like the way.
No, I can't, no, I didn't understand. At first you said, you said, you said negative for voting call vote. I know, because the fact that you, she said at first negative meant that it was against the chair and then went to yes and no. You said, you said how to vote. No, 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 I know. A majority vote in the negative overcomes the chair's ruling. A no vote overcomes the chair's ruling.
Okay.
Can we do that again? That's, that's Jamie.
Please.
Counselor, woman, Van Rij.
Yes.
Counselor, woman, Sad Martinez?
No.
Counselor, woman, Berna, Berna, yes, Bernanas?
No.
Counselor, woman, from the Ivy guard?
No.
Counselor, woman, jacket, vote?
No. Okay, uh, item number seven goes up to consent agenda. Uh, the, uh, motion, I'd like to uh, have a motion to pass consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, take care of that without item names, is that correct?
That without item names. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to pass consent agenda.
No, you can't make a motion.
I mean, I mean, I'd like that, I'd like to entertain the motion to pass consent agenda. It's supposed to be our fact, it's actually online too. It just, it takes a lot of time to just run it and I mean, see it often and just people decide that.
I'm in motion.
Is there a motion? No, no.
I'm in motion.
I'm in, I'm in.
Madam?
Okay.
I don't even know what happened.
Uh, I'm in motion. Uh, let me ask.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye. No. No, no.
Okay. No, Sabbath? Uh, number three, discussion possible action on closing general fund account in Texas between a bank and opening a new account and all matters related.
What happened to seven?
You said no, it was already up in the center.
See, that wasn't explained, I didn't understand that.
Well, then you should have made a motion.
Well, I understand that, Madam Mayor, I'm asking you a question, I understand that, I didn't understand.
Then you should not have made a motion.
I didn't make a motion, Madam, I made a motion to bring it over, but I thought it was gonna be a separate item, not a consent agenda. That's what I know.
No, your motion was to move it to the consent agenda.
That's not what I.
Jamie, would you re-rack your motion, please?
Well, she was to bring, she can bring, I can say that you said.
Maybe, that would be motion.
But I didn't understand that we'd be in doubt to consent agenda. Is there anything that I can?
No, it's already passed. We're on the next agenda.
And, I mean, legal counsel, is there anything I can do about that? I'm not understanding. I'm sorry. I thought it was gonna be a. I didn't check, I mean, I'm not gonna say no, right, I didn't, if you asked to move it to consent.
Okay, item three. Item three, discussion of possible action on closing the general fund account in Texas between a bank and opening it under a new account number and all matters related. That is due to the exact accounts being hacked. Your monitoring account, we need to gather out of its, its account number that it's in now and put it into a new account so that it will not be hacked anymore. Is there a motion?
I'm in motion that we uh, close the general fund account.
Let me ask a big motion on the floor first, in a second. Um, uh, Sally, would you repeat your motion basis there?
I made a motion that we close the general fund account that's a new one and open a new one for a new account and for all matters related.
Is there a second?
My second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hernandez?
Do we, do we have documentation that says?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, Jamie, we have documentation, is that correct, that it has been hacked?
Can you see it?
Can you see it?
Yes, I can see it.
Uh, where do you go? I'm sorry, where do you go? Right over there. Okay. Well, then.
Bring it back.
Okay, what, no, it happened? I know it is, but this, this second, it's second time since I'm on the agenda. Uh, obviously, uh, no.
We have been.
Obviously, it was the one. The one before that. It was us. Yes, it was.
Well, I'd like to see something.
Okay, Jamie, we'll uh, keep it, let me, it'll keep letting it be hacked and we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Very many.
I'm sorry? And there was a second? Okay, that's right. Um, there was discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
For a discussion?
No. Okay, all those in favor?
No.
Okay. All those in favor means you say aye. All those opposed mean you say no. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
All those agree?
I'm sorry.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, we'll keep the fund being hacked, thank you very much. Uh, number four, discussion of possible action on consolidating all operating accounts into general account and all matters related there too, as I explained to you. Um, there's, there's accounts that are, that are set up, that are done with the um, sales tax. But they're still operating funds. What's confusing in quick books is the fact that we're, we under op, we operate under one operating account. Um, it's best if we just had everything under one operating account, that way, that way it's easier for the, for the um, the uh, the, for Jamie and also for the uh, our. So that, so that we're all on the same page, because right now it's very confusing to them. They're trying to figure out the damn numbers, probably got Jamie somewhat figured out. So, is there a motion? Aye. Four. Three. Two. I should.
I know.
Well, I also, we can, we can do that, we can do that, we can put them, we can put them under, under, we can put them under the um, under the op, we can put them under the general account, but you put the sub-accounts under the operational account, which is the general account.
Just play, or you can say, look in that way.
Right, or any, any of those.
Sub-accounts?
Yes, there's sub-accounts, oh, there, there's sub-accounts.
Sub-accounts.
Because it's, it's all designated the general one. Okay. Shift. You want to bring back? Okay. Okay, so I am formally brought back. I apply discussion of possible action on the update ordinance 2015 dash zero six. City administrator and all matters related, you should have been presented. If you don't want to bring it back.
Sir?
2015 dash zero six. You got here. So, that's all, okay. Okay. Uh, since it's been, since uh, April 19th, that's been on there, um. Is there any uh, a motion?
Something, is the review.
Yes, the two people.
I'm in motion that. Um.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah.
Eyes have it. Um, discussion of possible, number six, discussion.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I said aye on the no.
No, she said aye.
No, I can stand, I said no. I said aye on the no. We said, what I said, I.
Okay, here we go again. When I say all those in favor, you say aye. When I say all those opposed, you say no. Now, there was three ayes on that vote. I don't care who did them, but there was three ayes, and the, the motion passes, no, I'm recording voting, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, can I appeal?
Uh, number, no, I have recognized you, I have not recognized you, no, you cannot. Um, this is number six, discussion of possible action on.
Madam Mayor, can I appeal?
Excuse me, no, you cannot. Miss Cody, no, I have not recognized you, you will not speak. Miss Cody, you will not speak. You did, she does not run this day as I did. I'm telling you, you, you had your chance, you took the vote, you do not speak. No, you have not been recognized, you will not speak. Number six. Exactly, exactly. Oh, okay, fine, I've already made my decision, thank you. Number six. Discussion of possible action on update on Marshall's building and all matters related. Uh, I'm going to go. I'm going to go tomorrow and talk to Mr. Dodson and get the update on the Marshall's building. My stop. So I will have that at the next meeting. Okay, number eight. Discussion of possible action on tower sanitation and all matters related, Miss Cody.
There was some discussion on higher sanitation. And higher sanitation is looking really hard to give our citizens the best prices they can give. Uh, there are new managers that have come on, there are new directors that have come on, and there are uh, really, really good communication between the city and higher. Uh, I have worked on this before and it was with the administrator and uh, I just wanted to tell counsel that I think we should go ahead and uh, approve their contract for the next um, three years. And that's my, my opinion. Uh, they have supplied us with every uh, kind of uh, citywide uh, you know, relationship. It is a good relationship. And uh, it's really gonna be changed from the last contract that we had as far as um, having, you know, uh, no communication, no anything to that effect. So, it, it really runs really good. If you have any questions, I can maybe try to answer, I'm not sure. The price that they had given us at the time and it still needs to be negotiated is somewhere between sixty and sixty-five for the residential. And we didn't get a clear price for the commercial because the commercial uh, is doing some kind of a re-evaluation of how many customers were not given the price that the city did. Another thing uh, that they gathered is that we were giving, getting prices from the outside of our city and it was being confused with the city residents. So now everybody is going to be uh, per se flagged as a city resident and that price won't change in that contract. For sure.
Um, the, uh, it's, I heard that we are have a kind of a contract that like, as you can see, you can call me resident, call me a guy, and I'm like, and um, nobody can turn my phone on, nobody can turn my email. I don't know what's responsible to the residents, whether you're asking and asking.
You know, that was the problem when we first started looking into the contract, because you should, you should have all that information and you should talk on behalf of the citizens, because that is something that was set up in that contract that was never done. So, that should be something that Mr. Who will be getting a hold of the city secretary in order to have you abreast of all of the residents that are in our city and what price they should be priced at, you know.
So, Renee, she's not there no more, or I just contact her, or?
No, 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 she's not there, there's, I have a list that he's supposed to be sending me and he said there's probably, probably about five or six individuals in management. And he is the top manager and he said if there is something that you need, he will answer your question and he will answer it within a week. He was very positive, he was very, very concerned about how our residents are doing. Please. 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 Why, 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 please, who? I'll give you that information when he sent you.
Why did you give that information? And help me when, when we finally get ready, we can put out a newsletter, a law army newsletter to everybody so they can, it'll be in there. Is there, is there a contract up? Are we, we're taking it out? Um, I'm negotiating.
Um, there is a contract that was due at the beginning of October and they, in order to work with the city administrator, because he went into detail on what the citizens were asking and what they were wanting, um, he has went ahead and voluntarily uh, not made the city adhere to the timeframes until the city is ready.
Okay, uh, why don't you give the call? Okay, discussion of possible action on the naming ordinance 2011 dash sixty-eight and all other matters related there too, Miss Cody.
Uh. How does this work for us?
What?
Uh, I need to ask. Uh, we supposedly, uh, because I could not, I answered under not and I answered with a aye, but it was in a question of not. So, but I think what I'm told is that this is passed because I answered it with a aye. So that's my understanding, that's my understanding, I don't understand it. So, um, we have been given a city administrator ordinance 2011 dash sixty-eight and this is repealing the ordinance of 2011 sixty-eight. Uh, is there action that can be taken to override with the regular 2011 sixty?
Uh, I think to look at that, that 2015 dash six ordinance, but my recommendation would be to bring it back from another meeting about any amendments to the new ordinance that might have been passed in nineteen ninety-four to reconcile 2011 dash sixty-eight if necessary and to determine if you wanna, how you wanna reconcile that and make another amendment. That will be my. We have access to 2015 actors. So, I don't know if it needs to be, how it needs to be reconciled. With 2011 dash sixty-eight.
And it does, it does, uh, I, I, well, we did it. Okay. Uh, we did it where it was, they were both, they were both repealed and replaced with that.
Replaced with a brand new.
2015 dash zero six.
So, any other amendments can be made to this ordinance that should be rocked. Because you don't have the ordinance to.
The 2015 dash sixty?
There's a, that would have been reported, right? And if you have one day amendments to the ordinance and what I have, I have just the bearing, and I don't know if I saw the whole thing, but I don't have it written, is that to consolidate so there's no confusion of what city administrator ordinance exists. There was a pre-visit that y'all made earlier.
Right, right.
So it, I believe that this would have consolidated 2011 dash sixty-eight with new amendments that were made earlier this year. So my recommendation would be any other amendments to come back. When I do propose.
So we just bring it back at the next meeting. Okay, discussion of possible action on amendment ordinance 2009 dash twenty-six and any other matters related there too. It's Cody.
I would like to, um. We have this ordinance for maybe a month now or more and uh, I would like to make a motion to pass this uh, ordinance of amendment 2009 dash twenty-six.
Um, is there a sec, uh, let me rephrase that, there's, uh, I'm gonna call your motion out of order because you are trying to make away the statutory, the statutory authority granted to me by the state of Texas.
I'm gonna kill your, your.
Uh, I apologize, I'm denying you. I'm not gonna deny you to take away my statutory authority by the state of Texas nor take away the Marshall's statutory authority by the, by the state of Texas.
Consent.
Uh, remember that the discussion. Discussion of possible action on amendment ordinance. You are not gonna take away the Marshall's statutory authority in order for him to be able to do his job. This is a, a myoral city council-run city, not city council, city council. To have city council involved in the Marshall's department is ludicrous. It's crazy.
I'm sorry, but uh, is it, uh, not? Can, can anyone else speak?
No, because I called, I called the motion.
Your city attorney, your.
I, yeah, I did not call on you. I called the motion out of order because you could, I have called the motion out of order. Chief.
Your city attorney is trying to speak.
I would like to remove from today, please. I'm not gonna do this.
No, I can video tape.
Wow. Check this out.
Alex, Alex, just go, get him out of here, get him out of here.
Steph, ever get him out of here, get him out. Mom, just go. Mom, just go. Mom, just go. Mom, just go.
Who is the arresting, who's the arresting officer?
Who's the arresting officer? I want everybody's name here.
Okay.
I'm a taxpayer here.
Calm down.
I'm a taxpayer here and I'm a citizen, and this is ridiculous. Mr. Boys? Are you lapdogs in the mayor or you local servants?
And they're gonna come and audit everybody. Everybody. State Marshals, the state representative, that means the governor. The governor's gonna come in on this. That's it. It was uncalled for. It was uncalled for.
Alex, Alex, Alex.
You said you were leaving and they hugged and hugged.
Alex, calm down, Alex. Hey, hey.
Alex, come on. You don't need that. You don't, you don't need to get hurt. No, no, he don't need to get hurt. No, he doesn't either. He don't need this.
Let's go, guys.
It's gonna end here.
Let's go, let's go.
It's gonna end here.
Come on, I'm just.
You got the counsel alone.
We're gonna straighten it out legally.
I have had lymph nodes removed on both of my arms, and distress on my arms is not good for me. Y'all understand that. My health is in y'all's hands. Y'all's health is in my, my health is in y'all's hands.
Twenty-five, eight, zero, eight, six, five, south.
Hi, hi.
Turn the damn volume.
Burna, just, just get in the.
Charlie, show me now.
Please, please, come, come, come.
Give me your location.
Some code of ethics, wow. Some code of ethics. Mom, yes. This is not the police force we want. This is not, and it will not be. It will not be if I'm here. This is no police force that you want here.
Soon as she took reign to this city, I knew what was gonna happen. Since she started council member here, now she's mayor. That's even better. Trouble from the start.
Marissa, stop. Marissa, Marissa, stop. Stop, stop, enough, enough, enough. I know, I know, but it's okay. It'll be okay. It'll be okay.
Shame on them. Shame on them. They should know better. They should know the law. Because they went to school to know the law. They should know better than this. Instead of being dirty cops. Dirty nasty cops!
Sir, could you let her go to myself, sir? I'll take responsibility for her.
I don't know what happened, but they're taking her.
There's nothing that happened, sir. She talked. That's all. She's, she's going through chemo. They have the cuffs on her lymph nodes, and that is hurting her very des- badly. She didn't do it, sir, I'm telling you. She talked out of order.
They took her out of here. She wanted to leave.
I have video of it all.
She did something wrong. So, I don't know what's going, what's.
Well, let me.
She's starved so.
The mayor wants to run the whole thing.
Can I take responsibility for her, sir?
Talk to her. She's a councilwoman.
Can I please take responsibility for her?
We don't want no problems with nobody. We don't want no problem.
No, no, no.
She can't go back to self.
It should be weighing on your conscience right now, you know? Thinking about, no, 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 like, thinking about your kids and them seeing this and knowing how you are, you know? Just saying. I know. I can talk freely. Your kids will one day see this. I will make sure your kids see this. It's in the car. Yeah. Mom, just get back. Get back. Stop it.
Just let her go. This is ridiculous.
Just stop. We'll handle it, we'll handle it.
It doesn't have to happen. That's how you run your department. That's not a department we want.
No, that's, that's a question of morale. That's not how they run, that's the morale. I know you're thinking about it. You're thinking about how much they did for you, how much we did for you?
She's asking you a question. She's banging on the door.
Okay, back up, back up. She asked to back up. Back up.
She needs help.
She just had surgery, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. But she's banging on the door now. Can you ask her? Please, please? Can you please ask her, please?
She just had.
Mom, okay, yeah. Look at her, look at her. I understand, I understand, but yeah.
Oh my god, oh my god.
I know, I know. Mom, stop. No, just stop. Yeah, stop.
She is asking for help. Please, please.
Please get back.
Stop it. Yes, stop.
Let's go, get back. Let's get back away from the car. Back off, stay away.
I know you're thinking about it. You have a very heavy conscience. You're thinking about how much we took you in and cared for you, fed you at our table. We were there for you all the time when you cried. Even when you were pissed off at Greg. We were there for you. Where are you for us? Where? They can't do anything when you're talking.
This lady's got nothing to do with nothing. She works for the mayor. She's gotta do what they told her to do.
I understand. I'm just talking to her.
Don't talk to her.
Why can't you look at me in my eyes? I babysat your kids. You can see I'm getting it, right?
She won't even look.
Yeah.
It's not only, only, it's only.
She's got, she's got.
They, they, they forgot that door. I'm pretty sure they need to take that one first.
She's coming, baby.
I hope you get a better attorney, Mr. Williams.
I hope you get a good attorney.